All to honor the Town of Old Tabor zoning commission regular hybrid meeting of Monday, October 17th at 7:00 PM in the town hall first floor conference room at 302 Main Street, Old Tabor seated tonight, it's me Bob Friedman Chair, North Calderella Vice Chair, Jerry Lewis Secretary, regular commission members Mark Delmonico and Anne Marie Thorson, that's five, also present or alternate is John Henry and Justin Terrebeau, absent this evening so far Sandy DeSenz though, present at the table Chris Costa, our zoning enforcement officer and Joanna Galley for clerk, we also have how many online?
Eight.
Eight? Eight online including our attorney Matt Willis.
Hello.
I'm in the audience here, next on the agenda is regular business minutes of our previous meeting at the September 3rd, should be October 3rd.
Should be October 3rd, yes.
October 3rd. October 3rd, that's a correction. There was a correction right there, right? We had one.
We got her.
You seem like that long. October 3rd. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes?
No, they are good.
They're good.
Always.
They're good. I'll make a motion to approve the zoning commission minutes of October 3rd, 2022 with the date corrected and as presented otherwise.
Second.
Second advice Jerry Lewis, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of October 3rd signify by saying aye. Aye, two, three, four, five in favor, no abstentions nor opposed. Next on the agenda is correspondence, we have any correspondence?
None.
Other, okay. Roman numeral four, deliberations, Fine Fettle Dispensary, application for special exception used for 4,000 square feet of adult use marijuana dispensary, 233 Boston Post Road, accessory map 44 lot 11 and the Gateway B4 district. This is, it's deliberation time, public hearing has been closed and so as part of our due diligence regarding deliberation, we note all of the referrals we received and the letters from the public in favor of the application and opposed to it and also input from our local traffic authority and independently as police chief Mike Spira, all of us who participated in the public and attended the public hearings have read all of those materials. I do have a question, Anne Marie Thorson here tonight and seated as a regular, have you listened to the recordings?
Yes, I listened to the recordings through the last meeting.
And you feel qualified to participate in deliberations and vote, great, thank you. We also have traffic report materials received from the applicant and from a separate traffic consultant and what else we have to go on? We have, the history of the application stems from prior approval of a medical marijuana dispensary at this particular location in, what was that year, 2020?
18.
2019?
18.
2018, even earlier, 2018. Then the state proceeded to change the statute and permitted marijuana adult retail sales and because of our regulations being constructed the way they are, medical retail sales are retail and retail is retail and then the state allowed for marijuana adult use retail, it by default became, also allowed where there was medical marijuana dispensary approved. So the zoning commission modified the regulations to limit future zoning, zoning applications for marijuana retail either medical or adult use to the two previously approved locations in the B4 district. The state also included other changes in that updated statute. So the commission ends up entertaining an application from Fine Fettle for marijuana directly adult use dispensary as retail in the B4 district at 233 Boston Post Road. Anyone else have any comments on our getting to this point and deliberations are the time to do it? Nope, nothing additional? Alright, we have requested of our consulting attorney Matt Willis that he prepare a motion in favor of the application, favor of approving the application for 233 Boston Post Road and we have also a draft motion for denial of Fine Fettle Dispensary at 233 Boston Post Road. Procedurally it works out smoother if there's a motion to approve and if it passes, it's approved, if the motion fails, it's not approved and that part of our responsibility would be then complete, however, we are obliged to state on the record reasons for non-approval such as there might be also mentioned in the motion to deny. But if one were to make a motion to deny and the motion was denied, you have a denial of a denial which is not an approval, so let's do it, a motion to approve first. Does anyone else have any input, questions, comments? Alright. We have a draft motion for approval for Fine Fettle Dispensary, an application has been filed by Fine Fettle applicant for a special exception for 233 Boston Post Road for an adult use cannabis dispensary facility to be operated by Fine Fettle under section 52 and 53 of the Old Tabor zoning regulations, the property is in a B4 zone. This motion is to approve the application as follows, seeing that the committee finds the proposal satisfies the special exception standards in 52.6 as well as the definition of cannabis dispensary previously approved established by 53.1 and the requirements of 34.2.16, because the site plan approval was issued on August 6, 2018, for a medical cannabis dispensary facility, the lot size is unchanged from that application and the use proposed is adult use retail sales. The commission requested a peer review of the applicant's traffic analysis to confirm there would be no adverse impacts through the surrounding intersections and street network. The commission's peer reviewer, Hardesty and Hanover confirmed the traffic analysis was concluded in accordance with industry standards, relied upon the Institute of Traffic Engineers Manual for Cannabis Facilities and accounted for site-specific conditions such as sightlines and roadway speeds. The commission finds that a cannabis dispensary facility adult use is a retail use and onsite parking complies with 62.4.6 Part D of the zoning regulations for retail uses. Because this is a new use, the commission wants to ensure that there is no impact to nearby properties particularly during the opening period and deems a parking management plan to be an effective tool to manage parking. The security measures proposed by the applicant including secure doors and numerous security cameras on the interior and exterior of the building as well as prohibitions on loitering, onsite consumption and underage access are sufficient to address any concerns about public safety and public health. The commission acknowledges the comments of police chief Michael Spira, his comments were focused predominantly on parking issues and traffic concerns about the flow of vehicles in and out of the site. The commission finds that with the parking management condition offered by the applicant to which Hardesty and Hanover concurred, parking and the movement of vehicles can be handled without adverse impacts to the surrounding roads or properties. The commission also acknowledges numerous public comments about recreational cannabis in Old Tabor. While a moratorium was in place, the commission spent nearly a year evaluating which cannabis usage should be allowed and conducted a formal public hearing during which very limited comment was received. The commission made the determination that retail recreational dispensaries should be permitted in two specific locations based on the use being allowed by Connecticut law and previously issued approvals, one of which was for this project. The commission further acknowledges that this application received a positive referral from the planning commission and from the economic development commission, a referral response which was neither recommending it or opposed to the application merely listing that there are economic benefits and that it should be considered, the local tax benefits to the Town of Old Tabor should be considered. If permitted by, the conditions for this approval motion include the following seven points, one, if permitted by the Connecticut Department of Transportation, the applicant shall install sidewalks along the frontage of the property on both Boston Post Road and Spring Brook Road. Number two, if permitted by the Connecticut Department of Transportation and with any local approvals, the applicant shall obtain approval for a curb cut and additional overflow parking to be located at the eastern side of the property along Spring Brook Road. Any spaces in this area shall be for employees only. Number three, hours of operation shall be Sunday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Number four, all sales shall be online sales with pickup by appointment only, there will be no walk-in purchases, there shall be no more than eight appointments per 10-minute period. The applicant shall make transactional data by hour and date of the week available to zoning staff upon request to confirm compliance with this condition. Number five, the applicant shall prepare a parking management plan to ensure the orderly flow of parking onsite and entering, exiting the facility. This plan may but is not required to include options such as use of a parking attendant, involvement of a third-party parking operator such as LAZ Parking and additional employee parking. The plan shall be reviewed by zoning staff for a determination of consistency with the terms of this approval. Number six, the applicant has depicted modifications to the intersection of Spring Brook Road and Boston Post Road on a drawing entitled conceptual intersection improvement plan prepared by SLR Consulting dated August 22, 2022. In the event the Town of Old Tabor pursues approval of this modification with the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, the applicant agrees to support the town's proposal and will contribute up to $50,000 toward the cost of the improvement. Payment shall be made within 30 days from the notification by the town to the applicant that the DOT has approved this modification. In addition, the applicant will contribute up to an additional $50,000 as also permitted by CGS 21A dash 422 Part G. Number seven, the applicant may apply to modify any operational condition including hours of operation and limitations regarding the number of appointments per hour and online only sales. Any such application shall include information regarding parking operations and transactional data to support such modification. That's a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Anne Marie Thorson, any discussion on the motion for approval? I think the requirements for a special exception application approval as in our regulations have been covered by the seven points in the motion and the findings are in support of a special exception approval for 233 Boston Post Road Fine Fettle. With that, I ask for a vote on the motion, all those in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed saying nay. Nay. The motion is denied, two in favor, Bob Friedman, Anne Marie Thorson, three opposed, Mark Delmonico, Mark Alderella and Jerry Lewis. The motion, the application is denied, as part of the special exception process, a motion for denial must be supported by entering into the records the reasons for such denial. Among those who voted to deny the motion for approval, what do you have to offer as required in our regulations to support a denial of the motion? Go ahead.
Yeah, got it.
The commission based on its knowledge of the area, the property and information provided in the application and all the information provided during the public hearing denies the applications for the following reasons, old property has previously approved for medical cannabis dispensary use, the ex-expansion of the medical, of the medical cannabis to use to an adult use cannabis facility into the whole structure is more than the property can reasonably handle undergoing from a medical use of half the building to under, under section 52 and section 53 of the Old Tabor zoning regulation. The expansion of the cannabis location is not appropriate as it increases in size from approximately 2,600 square feet of medical to 4,000 square feet retail. The commission finds that inadequate design employee parking consists since a number of the employees working at the dispensary will be greater than the number shown at the planned site. The application does not meet this section 62 standards regarding the circulation of flow of traffic within the property. The number of retail, of the number of possible retail customers proposed in the application is more than existing parking lot and driveway can handle.
That goes into the, into the record for coverage of the decisions regarding the denial of the motion to approve. Very well, that completes our activities on this application. Then the next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, addition to and any Old Tabor zoning regulations, section 64 and 11 sign regulations. This, the agenda item is very lengthy, if you wish to read all of the individual pieces proposed of the proposed text change, I refer you to the online agenda and the, and the application itself. The applicant, applicant has granted an additional 35-day extension to the November 21st meeting of the zoning commission and the petitioner is the Old Tabor Architectural Review. Everybody, the latest draft that we had of the, of the proposed text change?
You're talking about, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, okay.
Architect review, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I look online, I didn't see the November draft, I only saw July 12th.
35 extension to November.
Oh, well, the extent, yes, the extension.
So there is no new?
There is no new draft.
Draft that ARV.
Materials are still extended as of July 12th, right?
Yes, and attorney Willis is still online, the need to continue.
Do you want to continue or continue? Oh, the applicant is consenting to another extension and for, do we wish to handle any part of this application this evening?
They've, they've asked for an extension for a little more time.
Okay, so they, by asking for an extension, then the possibility exists that they would make modifications to the July 12th draft so that we would consider it once.
That's what they're working on.
Great, okay.
Yes.
And I'll make a motion. Bob? Do we want to keep attorney Willis on? Do we want to keep attorney Willis on? Um, oh, Matt Willis, yes, thank you for attendance.
Okay, have a nice night guys.
Good night, thank you, good night.
Let's see, are there, are there any questions regarding the Gateway text change?
For, for Matt.
If, has he gone, miss, Matt Willis, are you still there?
I came back.
Look back.
Are you familiar with Connecticut River Gateway Conservation Zone application for text changes and the, the question that I might have is that this zoning commission can approve as is or approve with modifications or disapprove of the application as with other text change applications, is that correct?
That's true, I, I do not know whether the gateway is currently considering anything else or you've received any communication from Gateway, I don't know if Chris knows that.
Right.
So the Gateway Commission asked us to continue to the next meeting and they had some concerns about some coverage amendments from 15 to 20% that are areas that are not visible from the river and the Gateway Commission, I did attend their last meeting and they're going to revisit this at some point, I asked how long and they said they would try to get onto it as soon as possible, but the other changes with the addition of the higher standard, which was to keep people from trying to cut off the wetlands on their property so that they weren't immediately adjacent to the river or tributary to kind of zone themselves out of Gateway regulations, that they supported because it was a higher standard, but they did not support the 20%, they didn't object, but they said it wasn't their standard and it was a little bit of a lesser standard and they would revisit it, so that's where we are today.
Uh, Matt Willis and them, the other commissioners as, as part of the application from Gateway and the draft last updated August 18th? Not correct, they, they sent us a letter and said September 27th, in effect stating that they would make some modifications, but as of the last draft that I have dated August 18th, there are some responsibilities that are part of the statutory establishment of the Connecticut River Gateway Conservation District that appear to me to be assigned to the Old Tabor zoning commission. If the statute assigns responsibilities to Gateway, can they then assign them to us or can we assume those responsibilities in collaboration with Gateway?
I, I know, I know historically Bob, that there's been kind of a, can you hear me? Am I coming through? Yeah, there's been a collaborative effort to, to make, you know, Gateway and the relevant zoning commissions work together on these type of standards and regulation changes. I don't know if Gateways commenced their own process to review that, I also don't know if they've taken any official action on your proposed zoning change, I don't know that.
No, right.
And, and the reason I say that is under the statutes, if there are zoning subdivision or planning regulations, they have, they, they're not effective unless they receive approval by the Connecticut River Gateway Commission.
Right. Well, my current concern had to do with some, uh, responsibility regarding the light, the light pollution, I think the zoning commission can handle that, but there are specifics regarding the zoning commission can, it's my understanding, this zoning commission cannot modify the Gateway Boundary Zone, for instance, that's established by statute assigned to Gateway.
Yes.
There is something regarding the developed, I think it's, it was in the developed area that, um, there were certain tasks assigned to the Old Tabor zoning commission regarding the determination of whether or not an area is to be considered developed or not and it's like, I thought that was Gateway's responsibility to determine the developed area, so, no, it's not, they, they could assign that to us.
Exactly.
Right.
So it's up to the commission to determine if it's a developed area or not or exemptions and in the past this commission has, has done that and Gateway weighs in at times.
Right, okay, well, in their, what I, what I recall reading in their text was that in order to determine if it's a developed area, there were actions to be taken and I want, it's unclear to me if the actions were one or the other or both of them that the zoning commission had to do in order for the area to be determined as developed, so that, I would like that question to go back to Gateway.
Okay, so at this point the developed area language is in your regulation, the only proposal for a change there is the request from the Gateway Commission to change from repairian buffer to repairian vegetative buffer. Vegetation, yeah, I see that, vegetation buffer, sorry.
Right, okay.
So at this point, I mean, that's a question for another text amendment since we didn't advertise it, but really where we are tonight is the Gateway Commission sent us text when they updated their standards, we've incorporated what they've requested into the text here. The only two changes are the standard, we're in the Gateway where you go from, where you have 15% coverage, we had a discussion at our workshop and I believe at our previous meeting that there are certain areas that are not visible from the river, they're in flat ground, there's other properties and buildings that you would never see that visual bulk or impact and we created our own standards which we proposed to them and since that's not their minimum standard, it's lower than their standard even though I believe from my attendance at the Gateway meeting and discussion as to why we were proposing this and the burden on property owners that they understood, but they haven't investigated that regulation to change from 15 to 20 and they wanted to do that, I did ask them how much time it would take them and they said that they would get on it. The second change is the higher standard that they did not object to where there's certain particles where at one point we had an applicant who said, well, if I just cut this part of the property off and I cut the Gateway line off, then I'm out of the Gateway. So our regulation proposes to change that, they did not object to that and from the 15 to 20% where it was not visible, they said they needed to investigate.
Okay, thank you, thank you attorney Matt Willis for being there tonight, we say good, now we could say goodnight to you.
Alright, goodnight, have a nice night guys.
Just kidding.
Take care.
Let's see, have to make a motion to continue the public hearing on the petition to amend the zoning regulations, section 64 and 11, to be held for here, Bob, being ARV would continue until, um.
Who's calling that?
November 7th.
Oh, so now you're, we're back on the ARV?
We didn't have a motion to continue.
Sorry, you're throwing me off, you pulled that in.
We need to, we need to continue that.
Okay, alright, thank you, so I'm in.
That's all we're doing.
Okay, good.
Motion to continue to our next regularly scheduled meeting of November 7th, 2022. In this room, first floor conference room 302 Main Street, Old Tabor, 7:00 PM. And is a discussion, yeah, should be the 21st.
I'm sorry, the 21st, mine, we've been extending and moving to, the applicant requested the 21st to give a little additional time to work on. We've been extending and moving to, uh, the applicant requested the twenty-first to give a little additional time to work on the text.
Okay, thank you. All right, change some, change the motion to continue the public hearing all the way to November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, second.
Second, by very little, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to continue ARB's signed regulation text proposal to eleven twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, carry five zero zero, thank you. Public hearing for Gateway rigs. To which date do they wish to continue this?
No, they're not wishing, this is, this is a public hearing tonight.
Okay.
Um, I did briefly discuss a little bit out of order with attorney Willis here.
Alright, so the public hearing.
So they're not, this is your petition, they're not asking to continue. It's up to the board how you would like to proceed with this text. I can summarize again or you can just rewind it to.
Please do. We wish to go through the regulations, text changes as proposed in the draft of August eighteenth. I have, I have a few questions. The developed area on page one. Number one. Uh, line three. So they're talking about the area which has within the riparian vegetation area immediately land or the coastal jurisdiction line characterized by buildings. Why is it not buildings and structures? There's structures and buildings. Why is it just buildings?
What's the date that you're looking at?
October third.
October third.
Oh, the text was updated.
In the developed area, number one.
Yeah.
Third line down of the underlying text, characterized by buildings. Why is it only buildings? Why is it not structures and buildings to determine if an area is developed? There may not be any buildings, but there might be a multitude of structures.
Okay, structures. Okay, and buildings. Okay. What else to me there?
All right, this is, this is my question about the authority, because if you read further down, you get to, uh, line, line three, four, five, the first word is and. All right, so does that mean that it has to be both? What comes before and, and what, and which comes after and? Which has been or may be mapped and designated. So if the Old Tabor zoning commission has not yet mapped and designated the developed area, is it still a developed area?
It's up to you.
Or, or is it only determined to be a developed area after this commission maps and designates it as such?
So this commission has the gateway zone line adopted on their map as an application comes to you. And the commission in the past has not remapped their map. They have made a determination if an area is a developed area or not. So, for example, a property like.
So that would be determined by this commission before an applicant submitted?
It, it's happened in the past at the time of application.
Okay. If that works, then that's okay. All right, turn the page. In the, um, in the enlarge and or extend gateway conservation zone in that underlying text. Is there not a duplication of words? Any change to an existing structure or structures which in any way enlarges the envelope of the structures? Which in any way enlarges the envelope of the structure or structures? Get rid of the first. Get rid of the first, which in any way enlarges the envelope of the structures. Get rid of that part. Because the second part.
Yeah, which in any way enlarges the envelope.
Enlarges the envelope of the structure or structures.
Might have been a double. Yeah.
All right, then, uh, you covered that elsewhere. The, the traditional riverway scene, I'm not saying that we should take it out, but is that code for character?
We're just following the gateway model.
In the gateway conservation zone, and there's another one later on. It talks about the natural and traditional riverway scene. Is that a permissible use of, um, terminology that characterizes the, the, the appearance and the relative to its surroundings?
This is a model.
Allowed to use the word character, but it's okay to use the natural and traditional riverway scene. We'll go with it, okay, that's.
This was, this is the gateway text.
We were, all right. On the next page of riparian, we get to the word riparian is a brief definition that next comes uh, no change to riparian area. And then the change is to the riparian vegetation buffer, that gateway conservation zone. Right? So the underlying text there. The next to the last line, the coastal jurisdiction line, which plant life was legally existing. Can plant life be existing illegally? Or is, is, is it, you know, I want to understand the, the value of the word legally there. Which plant life was existing.
Yeah, well, remove the word legally.
Yes, remove the word legally.
Yes.
As, and then it says, as of the adoption of the Connecticut River Gateway Conservation Zone standards. We have previously adopted those standards, which, what is the date? The date that we first adopted them at some point in the past, or is it the date of adopting these new standards?
In nineteen seventy.
It doesn't give me a handle on which date. The gateway standards.
If you said, why don't you just say, existing as of the original?
Well, right.
Original date of adoption?
Right.
Do you want an actual date, Bob?
No, I don't need a calendar date.
Original date.
Yes, of the, of the, of the previous or the prior approved. Of the, of the, of the approved gateway standards, uh, it's, uh.
Jones, this, how about the original date of the adoption? Which was?
That'll work.
Okay, original date of the adoption standards in Old Tabor. And then I could probably put in the season, the actual date. I don't know it off the top of my head. Yeah, okay.
The next page, the total floor area gateway conservation zone, underlying text, proposed as new. Some of the gross area of all the floors in a structure. Why is it not a building or structure?
You can change that.
This new definition is sort of a merger of our own existing definitions of gross floor area and floor air and, and total, and let's see, and story, I'm sorry. Because the proposed text on the first line, at the last word of the first line, the sum of the gross area of all floors.
Yep.
In our regulations, gross floor area is this, is growth area of all stories. And so what is the, what, is it, is it good to change our gross floor area definition?
We're not changing.
This does not change our existing gross floor area definition. My question is the wording in this proposed text change that merges our gross floor area definition and our definition of a story into one definition.
So you don't like total floor area? You don't like that?
I think we already have a means to measure the gross floor area of all the stor, uh, the area of all the stories in a building or structure as measured from exterior faces of exterior walls. And then this definition goes on to use the defined term in italics, gross floor area. Which means that that existing definition for gross floor area is referenced in this. And it is operational under this new definition. So if it, I'm, I'm confused that to the value of this new definition. How is it different from using what we have for gross floor area?
So you think it's repetitive and should be excluded? So that the gateway draft had so many, and I think I shared it with you quite a while ago, had so many definitions. Yeah. It had definitions of site plan. We have a whole section on site plan. It defined vegetation. It defined, they're, they've gone through and defined so many things. And they're really kind of spelling everything out. And some of it, I went back and forth and objected a little bit because if you say vegetation, it's kind of a hard thing to, to define from what their, their proposal was. And I'm just kind of throwing that out as an example. So this is gateway text. So if you feel our gross floor area text covers it, do we need a total floor area?
Okay.
Is that, I think that's where you're going with this, yes.
And my, my suggestion, if it could be passed along to the Gateway Commission applicant is to streamline the definition of total floor area without including our make it new, make it something different from gross floor area. Which we already have defined.
So I guess the difference is what is the difference?
See, the conflict is that our gross floor area definition says the gross area of all stories. This says the sum of the gross area of all floors.
Yeah.
Don't refer to our definition if you're going to change the words that are in our.
So why don't we just say all stories?
Yes.
Instead of floors. Measure for the exterior faces of the wall.
And on the one, two, three, fourth line, whether finished or not, provided that area has a structural headroom. I think it would read, it would be clearer if there were two that's in a row.
So that, that's.
That, that area.
Let's kind of revisit this. And, and I think you're right. Roger Addix is whether finish or not. Which is our, provided a structural headroom of at least six feet.
That comes from our definition of story. This is where they're merging two definitions into a new thing which has not yet made itself clear.
So I guess my question is why would we not, what's stronger about this regulation?
That work?
Well, I, I mean, if we eliminated it. Yeah.
Right.
I think we might still have it covered between gross floor area and story, and then it breaks out into the half stories and all those other calculations, which I think our regulation meets this or is tougher. Yeah, that we have ours, yeah. Because. And then we have a whole basement or first floor which is located entirely below ground service will not be included in total floor area calculations. Our definition of story is tougher.
Actually.
One could make it rid of this all together.
Well.
I think our definition is tougher because you have to have for a story more than four feet above the average interesting natural grade at the perimeter, more than four feet above the finished grade.
I could understand the need for total floor area in the gateway zone, but it should say something like the total floor area is, um, sum of all of the areas that are gross floor area, and if that's in italics, then we know where, how to do that. And, and, and then go on to say which part of the story definition you, you're not including. And on the, the next to the last line, it, it says a basement or first floor which is located entirely below ground surface.
Yeah, ground surface.
Ground surface.
So the question is why do we need this? If we have the story, our regulation for story is tougher and our regulation is for gross floor structure is tougher. Do, that, that's, I think where we're going and this is more confusing.
Either get rid of it entirely or make it clear without.
Because ours, like she said, it's darker.
If you, I think you'd probably need a total floor area, but you can't.
I guess what, why do they need a total floor area?
Because they want to point to it for some other reason, and some other regulation.
I, I mean, I think part of the difficulty with these blanket regulations is that all the towns are different. So, for example, there's text in here on light pollution. We have sections and sections on light pollution. There's other towns that don't have them and before this, well, this is really one of the first drafts that came to you during workshop or a similar one. It was a why reinvent the wheel? Because I think some of the things they wanted to define made it more confusing and conflicted or were not as tough as what we have. So I, I think this is a good point. I don't know what this.
They wish to use the term.
So, but they have gross floor area.
For all the towns. And it wasn't in our rigs, so they put forth a proposed definition of total floor area so that it would be in our rigs and they could use it in all the towns.
So eliminate it.
But the definition, as long as it satisfies what they want, the definition of total floor area could still be different in all the towns.
So why can't we just eliminate it?
Eliminated. Yeah. Yeah, that's.
I mean, that's your.
We could give it, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
See, like, one of the things like fifty-eight point two required riparian vegetation buffer area. It's a regulation. You know what I mean? It's not optional. It's not, it's not. Right, where are we? I, I was just saying fifty-eight too. I think there's a lot of things that are so repetitive or so unnecessary and we, I weed it out quite a bit, but.
Uh, and the proposed regulation fifty-eight point two point four. Second line near the end, uh, uh, the second line on the right. It, it gets into, it says, "A practice which may promote unwanted transport of eroded materials into the Connecticut River." I understand the logic. I do not disagree. I'm just not crazy about adding the, the reasoning behind the regulation into the regulation itself. Why does the regulation need to be supported by that? Doesn't. Regulation is what it is. The reasoning behind it could go into some, something else, but it shouldn't be.
So you just, so, so end it with, in a direct answer, manner, period?
Right, get rid, right, period, after manner, period. And we eliminate. And we eliminate the remain, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I I mean, do you wanna do the same with preparing vegetative buffer area? I mean, a regulation is a regulation, why are we calling it required? You're talking before this one.
Fifty eight point two.
It, I mean, it's it's the same thing, you know, it it's like if we said required setback, required coverage, we prior to our parking spaces, if we put required in front of every regulation.
Yeah.
It's a regulation, it hopefully it's required. And and I think it's giving them more teeth that they feel, I I don't know if people are arguing, but. So remove required.
Yeah.
Okay, and this is fifty eight point two. Okay.
Great. Well, then it says the commission establishes. Can we change the word establishes to requires?
Yeah, you can use it there.
Yeah.
Requires. All right.
All right, all the way to fifty eight point nine light pollution.
Hey, I'm gonna go back now because now you got me over analyzing them.
I don't have a follow with it, just try to just realize how subjective. All of those things are. And if we can get away with it, fine, but.
Oh, that, well, I'm going back to fifty eight six now.
Oh.
Where they. Say structure setback. Well, that's what they're adding to show that it's the setback, but if we're gonna call it a structure setback, then we go on to say any building or structure.
Right.
So should it be building slash structure setback? Or do we just leave it as setback because it's. A a setback for a building or structure? Do we need to say the setback is for, I'm just, I'm not, I mean.
Put in building or structure.
Building and structure, but building or structure is in the text.
So remove.
Yes, so remove structure.
Well, they they wanted to add structure, they're gonna add structure.
Then you have to build.
Building adds structure to.
Can we just say setback?
Structure said, it used to say just accept that.
Okay, now we wanted to say that.
Take out the underlying word structure and means you're not changing what was or what was there.
Or have to put in building slash.
Slash or setback.
Right. Elsewhere in our regulations, we have building slash structure.
Uh, yes.
You could put that. That's on fifty eight point eight, you can see that they do it there.
Fifty eight point six and fifty eight point seven.
So in fifty eight point eight.
They did that.
Yeah.
I might have caught that and put in structure, but I didn't catch it, however, they. Anyway.
Okay.
Okay, maybe.
Fifty eight point eight, no change, leave it, see what's you, see if we can get away with. And that's all I have. Whether their proposed changes.
So now for the higher standard or the lower standard from the fifteen. To twenty. I guess the question is, are you gonna go forward with that? I mean, we could say to gateway that when they get to revisiting it. That. The commission will revisit it. This commission.
Still waiting for them to go through.
Go through the process, if you wanna do it now, or do you wanna? Eliminate it, so this is where it's interesting because we sent the gateway commission a referral. And it was a preliminary review, those were their comments, but technically. And we really can't use Matt because Matt is also the attorney for the gateway commission, so if we end up, other than general advice, we could be a little cautious with his involvement. If. Gateway was to say no to that regulation. Apparently it voids the regulation. I I'm not really sure we have to get additional legal advice. But I I do have to say that the gateway commission was pretty receptive to it. They were just concerned it wasn't in there. In investigating it, but.
Why don't we just give them a little more time to investigate then?
They're gonna get a subcommittee, it's. It's not gonna exactly be like at their next meeting, I I don't think it's, they're gonna have their rules and regulations committee. Get together and meet on it, so it's either. Eliminated. Or if you choose to adopt it. I think I would say to gateway when we send the referral. That the commission chose to adopt it, adopt it. You know, as for. To get it completed. A little more efficiently, however, we'd always be open to revisiting it. When there's a standard for.
It's important. And I understand from especially from your perspective in the ZBA. To fix that coverage stuff, that's not in here. They're going to propose the text change to address that. No matter what, right?
They're gonna visit the idea. So in the gateway meeting, I explained that there's. Folks who live in areas in the gateway zone. Say, for example. Uh, in the like in the Willard Avenue area or over. By the Otter Pole Restaurant, who have neighbors. Nearby in a similar zone who have twenty percent, these folks have fifteen percent.
Right, what that, yeah, but that's not in. That's the fix for that, it's not, i- is it in here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, I I mean, I just think we need to, you know, the mission needs to a- address that and recognize that that's in.
Yeah.
So this is where it says fifty eight point eight. In this typically residence A, A A one and A A two.
Okay.
There, it does not include A A three, which is or triple A Otter Cove, it does not include marine industrial. So in the residence A, A A one and A A two districts, the more restrictive gateway requirements do not apply when the applicant can demonstrate all of the following requirements are satisfied. The lot is less than twenty thousand square feet, the lot is not adjacent to or visible from the Connecticut River. The lot or proposed improvements are located on a lot where the improvements are not visible from the river as a result. Of topography, other structures and locations, and we could probably just merge B and C into one.
Mm hmm.
Concise. Or I guess the improvements.
What do you think? If we adopt these regulations. And gateway gets to propose another change.
Yeah. I say we adopt them.
I think that's a better way to go.
And when we send the referral, we'll notify them.
Yeah.
That we adopted them, we're welcome.
Open to.
Open to comments.
Yeah, that's fair.
What we'd like to go forward with this and then that way. We could almost be the test, so just.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Okay, let's do.
Yeah.
Okay. We will be able to put together the the master list of changes we need tonight.
Yes.
Okay, we'll we'll figure it, figure that part out. And then the the changes that we've discussed this evening about eliminating certain parts, changing certain words. Are incorporated into what will then be. A motion to approve.
Just housekeeping referrals were sent out on August nineteenth. Um, we heard back or or in. From harbor management planning.
DEP.
DEP. We have not heard back from the adjacent municipalities. Oh, the one thing planning commission said was that they had an issue. They were a little concerned. About. The lighting regulations and that some of the lighting regulations may be a little bit over the top. So they discussed that and said maybe the commission, the zoning commission in the future could filter and take a look at them, which I think. We need to, especially in some of our sections with dark zone, light zone, rural zone.
Yeah.
It's density where we've had some conflicts, but they. Were supportive of this. We have not heard from the adjacent municipalities, our attorney was here, we've talked about the gateways missions. I think we've heard from everyone that. We need.
Okay.
So.
I make a motion to approve the petition to amend the Old Saver zoning regulations to incorporate. Recent standards of the Connecticut River Gateway Commission. For CGS twenty five dash one oh two G and other amendments. As all modified this evening.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any discussion on the motion? Oh, there's a favor of the motion to. Prove the petition to amend the zoning regs. For gateway standards as modified this evening, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously, no abstentions, no, uh, no, no nays. Effective date?
November seventh. Yeah.
All right, effective date, November seventh, twenty twenty two. And we'll probably hear from Gate. That's it, thank you. Wasn't as painful as I thought. Uh, committee representative and staff reports.
I'll make it quick, um, we sent out our first round of. Sign letters telling businesses that we're gonna be back and and Bob.
I signed them, I didn't, I didn't use Autopen, I signed them.
He signed all of them.
How many were there?
There was what, how many did we send them the first?
There are lots.
There was over fifty.
Okay.
Now he's not an autopen. So we'll do another round of those and then January first. We're morning, we're going back to our normal sign enforcement practices.
Yeah, with described as a um, a two year, a a. A a. A COVID pandemic. Two year enforcement hiatus.
Yes.
It's a acronym for extensive.
Well, it's it's getting.
It's out of control.
Yeah, you know, and then someone complained about one. Pause I've done and I said, you know, we really can't.
Pick on one.
Pick on one, it's kind of an all or nothing. Contact all land.
Ooh, the mobile gas station across from Mystic Market, you know, the the beginning of Mariners Way, it's all boarded up.
Yeah. Yeah, they shut down.
The ones Joe Ren, the ones Joe Ren had proposed to fix up.
I didn't notice that.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I have heard that there are replacing tanks.
They gotta go ahead with Joe Ren's previous.
No, they withdrew it, they withdrew it, apparently, they decided, they said we're not.
So yet another gas station is off the list. Could come back, but for the moment.
There's a, Justin was just saying there's a rumor that they might be re.
Replacing the tanks.
Oh. Oh, yeah.
But I know their pumps weren't working the last time I sat there.
Yeah, me too.
They couldn't read anything on the screen.
Offices boarded up.
Yeah, everything boarded up. Yeah, a couple of weeks now.
Yeah, all two weeks.
Yeah, it's been a while, yeah.
I haven't, I haven't been out and about in the past few weeks like I normally am.
The lights are operational at the high school, when they're on, if you happen to go by, take a look. It's actually.
It's great.
It looks like it works.
Yeah, yeah, I was standing next to um, one of the neighbors and he said it works the way that it was proposed.
Right.
Yeah, they have no ambient light in front of their house.
The one, yeah, there was one concern, someone said they think it might be too dark going to the parking lot to the field now, and I'm like.
Light, hey, cuts off.
Yeah.
They cut, that's what. The one where it's supposed to. But with with the new, um. Where they're putting the bricks with the names, that's gonna have lighting in it. Which should help with that walkway out.
All the lighting, like.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't hear that. Oh, we'll see.
I think their election, their election is pretty versed in dark skies after. A number of times, um, we've been over. Okay.
Anything else? And what's we got?
Not much, um.
The building next to Pafatita is looking pretty big. It's on it.
See you.
Phase one.
So your next meeting, we have our moratorium. Discussion in the. Curry Queen Restaurant or Curry Queen.
New restaurant. Where's that?
Former.
Entry to. Backside of the, um. Say we're shopping level.
Oh.
Where that. Fireplace.
Gas.
Yager gas. Pretty much Lynn Street where the car is good at all, it's right across.
I I seen the fireplace is going in.
Yeah, they moved out, sold it.
Or it's under contract. The Curry.
Indian. Very great.
So the the question that we were anticipating some time ago.
So smoke on the water.
Mm hmm.
Um. Yay. With true. Uh, as a result of the grant that we were working on a little bit behind the scenes. Um, so if the grant is awarded, we'll know in December. And if it's not.
December, that we're gonna get.
So it would make sense just to withdraw until. We know what that is the discussion, then they can just reapply and address comments that were already submitted, so that lighten the agendas. Uh, I expected we would probably have maybe a gas station or other application in, but that. Um, didn't work out, whole foods, I know, was it for breastfeeding? For a preliminary, I know they're still. Working away. Um, and starting site plan. You know, not concept plan, an actual site plan. Um, application and when that and I met with them to talk about the inland wetlands permit. So, things. I was kind of coming like a freight train and everything kind of derail a little bit. But they're still coming. A little lighter winter. But we do have a number of small applications that I think will kind of sneak in.
Great.
Much to adjourn.
Your second. Second, second, Mark Eldon, second, Jerry Lewis, motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.